Beach District, I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to your honor which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the invocation, which I believe is seat two today.
Yes. Great Mother, recall on your depth and strength to give us thanks for the world around us. Thanks for all the creatures and plants and the mysteries of the ocean depths. Let us learn their lessons and seek their truths. Help us to discern how we have polluted our oceans and empathize with the creatures that have no voice, so that we might live in harmony, a better life for all. Amen.
Thank you. Great, roll call.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner Rivers?
Here.
Commissioner Wei?
Here.
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Flowers?
Here.
Commissioner West?
Here.
Great, next is adoption and approval of the agenda. You have a motion to adopt?
I motion for.
All right, so that's a second for Tom, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, public comment? Now, government representative comments. They're getting worse, Elise, it feels like every meeting, it's that feedback is getting worse and worse.
All right, good afternoon, Carlos Avalies, City of St. Augustine Fire Department. I know Chris usually does our public safety update, and he will. I came here personally today to thank this board for their continued support of public safety. We had an unbelievably busy weekend with the nor'easter two weeks ago, and I can tell you that the board's decisions over the past couple of years to help supplement public safety and ensuring safe passage of our waterways had a profound impact on our ability to respond and help voters and save lives that weekend. So I appreciate everything that you do. I'll leave, you know, Chris to give you those, but more from me as an administrator to you.
Yeah, let's, I think we're gonna pause for maybe a minute or two and figure out what this audio issue is, because I can't imagine another hour and a half of this. Elise, is there a way to turn it off for now until we start back up?
I'm trying to figure out.
Is it me?
You sounded like you had it up against there.
Was that killing the sound?
All right, well. Seed, um, yeah, why not? We'll see, uh, see what happens. Any other government representatives?
Jim Thiggett, Director of General Services, City of St. Augustine. Four items quickly for you today. First of all, I brought up to you, I think it was two meetings ago, that there was a large floating dock in San Sebastian River, seventeen feet by twelve feet. Finally got the invoice, gave it to Elise, it was $4,000, which was the estimate that I, that I mentioned to y'all. So that's been out, destroyed, removed and destroyed. Not to step on Chris's toes, but from the last nor'easter that we had with the king tide and everything, we didn't lose any boats from our mooring field, which is a, which is a plus from the mooring field. I'm not gonna say anything further, because I'm sure Chris will. Next to last thing is, as a reminder, I brought this up last meeting, in January, I'll be bringing to you all, in our local agreement for signature, for our fine grant application, which needs to be in by the end of March. So after you approve the local, then we bring it back to our city commission along with the resolution, and that goes to, that goes in with the application, and it's gonna be again fifty thousand from you and a hundred and fifty thousand from FINE, which will make three grant applications now. So next December, we should start to, we should hopefully start dredging again. And then lastly, we have, um, we have two boats that I'm gonna bring to your attention that I would like to get approval for, that we're gonna have pulled. One boat was in Salt Run. Police officer here, our new, our new marine, uh, police officer, can talk more if you have any questions. There was a boat in Salt Run where the owner had passed away, the paperwork was already in process. To have that boat hauled out and destroyed, that broke loose during one of the storm. We have it corralled at least in an area that really boats can't get into. We have a quote for that. And we also have another boat down by the Doug Crane Boat Ramp that FWC gave us the paperwork, it's already to pull. The total amount is $7,450. Again, we're gonna split that seventy-five, twenty-five with FINE, so the ports portion would be $1,862.50. And this was the estimates that we received from the company that we have a contract with. And the FINE will be responsible for $5,587.50.
Who's the company pulling them, Jim?
It's a company called TSI.
Tow com- a salvage company?
It's, they pull the boats, they bring it and they destroy it and they haul it away for us, all one.
So it doesn't go to Samsey, it's just, it's, they're taking them off completely?
Yes.
Like on a barge or something?
That, if they put it on the barge, yes. Some aren't able to.
Never to come to our waters again.
Never to come to our waters again. So, if I can get an approval for that, and we'll move forward. Again, that was an estimate.
Um, could you give me the exact amount of the board?
For the port district, we're looking for $1,862.50. And the FINE cost will be $5,587.50. And the total cost for both boats, the estimate, is $7,450.
That's for us?
No, that's, that's the total. Our share's about eighteen hundred bucks.
Eighteen sixty-three, essentially.
Hey Jim, what about that boat at the northeast, or northwest corner of the bridge?
Right. I was gonna let.
Oh, you let him?
Yeah, that's a fun story.
Okay.
We may put lights on it for nights of lights, we don't know yet. So.
All right. So you're asking us to approve that now?
Yes, if we could, just a non-verbal yes, go for it.
That's not something that needs to be noticed, I guess? Probably not.
It's not a grant application, so I'll go ahead and move that we contribute our share of $1,862.52 for removal of the boats on Salt Run and Doug Crane.
Just a question, how, if we're spending money, and how is it not a grant application? I'm just, I don't understand.
You have, I think, money budgets in your budget.
So this is part of something we've approved?
Yeah, this is.
So that, then we don't have to?
Yeah, it's coming out of a line item.
Under derelict boats.
I second that.
All right, that's a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none? Great.
Anything to change, I'll bring it back to you in December, hopefully it'll be out by then.
Can I ask you one question?
Sure.
Are we breaking records with fuel sales down at City Marina?
Uh, this, this past year, we broke records for not just fuel, but moorings and dockage.
But fuel is going crazy, Eric was saying that they're running out of gas every day almost.
We're, we're getting inundated with a lot of folks.
Can you fit a bigger tank, it's twenty years old now? Bigger tank?
We could take a look at it. The tank was installed the year after I got here, I got here in 2006, so I think 2007.
Not twenty years old yet.
But almost, so.
Just curious, because when we, that's such a big lifeline, that fuel dock at the City Marina, and that we're literally running the tanks dry most days, is spectacular, and it'd be nice if we could have more fuel.
Right, we're also getting bigger boats in with the breakwater.
True, which is wonderful.
Which take a lot more, sometimes we just call tanker, just for that boat.
Well, you're also getting all the boats going back south for the winter.
And I think COVID is helping us, because people just wanna stay on the water away from people.
Right. Could I just ask one question, just for future, just something to look into, is, would it be, Mr. Meek, could you just, would it be possible for us, if it came up, from the city to finance a new fu- a bigger fuel tank? I don't know if our charter would let us, but it'd just be interesting question.
You have to look into that, the question we might.
That's all.
Anyone have anything else?
I have a question.
Yes.
How did the Marine Street fare in the flooding, the high tides last week?
The Marine, just very, very minor damage. We did fairly well. The docks were essentially rebuilt after Matthew Irma Dorian and another nor'easter, so we had very little damage.
Good, thank you.
So. Pat, you wanna talk about that one boat in the?
Good afternoon, Pat Harvey with the City St. Augustine Marine Unit. It's a slow process, we all know it's a slow process. We've talked to the owner, and have tried to reach out to the registered owner, we're working on that. The owner's aware of it, he also lives on another one of the vessels downtown that we've had issues with. He's working downtown, Thursday he'll be issued a citation for the boat, and we've started the process, so we're within our ninety days now.
This is, you're talking about the one that's in the corner at the bridge?
Yes ma'am, the one that's, yeah. It's actually tied to DOT property, so I'm dealing with them as well.
And that was just recently sold from what I heard, so it probably hadn't changed, so you're going back to?
Yeah, it hasn't changed hands illegally yet.
Oh boy.
And there's no bill of sale. So, um, we'll probably.
Just for clarification, it's always best if you sell a boat to walk the people right down to the DMV and put it in their name, right then and there.
So we're dealing with the registered owner as well, but as of right now, we've started the process, so it's kinda where we are. Thanks.
Good afternoon, Sydney Limbatt, St. John's County Parks and Recreation. Just a quick update on our beaches, as we all know, we went through that nor'easter. Our beaches have experienced some extreme erosion, and we finally just got beach driving fully opened up Monday of this week, so it held the water with the, with the wind, so it couldn't escape anywhere. So we do have now driving open at Porpoise Point, Volano is still closed due to the erosion, and there's not enough beach there to provide vehicle access as well as pedestrian access. And then we are open on our south beaches, all the way back down to Fort Matanzas, our FEMA dune project has completed, so that parking lot is back open and usable to the public, so.
Is there anything left of the FEMA dune project? Did that get annihilated before it was even done?
It got, it got pretty wrecked, but there's just a little bit there.
Heard a video from the Matanzas lady. I was gonna ask you a question, I forgot, so.
Any other questions?
No, but I, I do wanna thank you and your entire department for reaching out to all of us commissioners to have one-on-one meetings because of Sunshine, and introduce the new director of Parks and Rec, Ryan Kane. I hope for everyone else here that that, those were productive meetings, I certainly learned a lot.
Wonderful.
Yes.
I had no idea they were working so hard.
Yeah, I was really impressed, and I would just like to encourage that level of transparency and coordination with the county. I consider your department to kind of be our go-to on that from this point forward, and I, I just appreciate the initiative.
Thank you, and we, we enjoyed them as well, and we even, after leaving our last one today, said maybe it should be a quarterly meeting?
Yeah.
Something like that, just to get everyone in the same room, so.
Yeah.
We enjoyed it just as much.
Come in, and during us, even especially, we can just give the whole, everybody at once, whatever would work.
Yeah, of course. Yeah, I, I think the public would love to learn about what you guys are doing, so great work.
Alright, thank you guys.
Yeah.
Josh Underwood, Sheriff's Office Marine Unit. As you know, to echo Chief Avalies, we've been staying pretty busy with the storm boats. I do have a suggestion with the storms for the port, for you guys to take into consideration. We ran into the issue with salvage companies and these boats, where these people don't have money to have these boats towed. We're kinda stuck with them, so I don't know if the port could set aside, and if it would even be in the charter, to set aside some type of emergency towing fund for these boats that are hitting the bridge, that are breaking anchorage, or whatever, directly with towboat or sea tow, or whatever salvage company that could come in an emergency.
That's a good idea.
Due to the towing situation.
Yeah.
Why wouldn't we be allowed to do that?
Well, some of those guys won't come out in severe weather, as Mr. Pasetti will probably tell you, but still, it's a great idea, and it's not always that bad.
Right, and the problem we run into is the larger sixty-five, seventy-foot boats trying to tow with a thirty-foot boat.
Right. Like that one of the world.
When they're properly trained to do these tows versus us.
The boat to do it, an actual towboat.
Correct, that's set up for that. Just something for the board to consider for these future incidents.
How much money do you think would be, we would need to set aside, and, because it'd be a revolving fund, right, obviously, you know?
Right, I, I wouldn't even know.
No, the captain said boat, towboat and sea tow, you want me to give it a whirl and see what they come up with?
Wait, so let me understand, we're gonna be subsidizing the owner of a seventy-foot yacht for towing?
He actually had a towboat.
Some of these, these people that have these big yachts?
Uh huh.
You would think they would have money to fund this?
Uh huh.
And they don't. Like, they're living on this house, this is their house, and there is no money, these boats turn into derelict once they hit something. So to end on that thing that I'm throwing out there is, from the storm, we are working ourselves for boats that have turned into derelict status. So we're gonna end up on the back end in the port district having to fund these removals.
As opposed to just having them towed to what, like a mooring ball at that point?
Or a dock or something to get them?
When they're dragging, mooring ball dock river.
They're not banging all night against.
Right, might be cheaper.
The bridge, the wall, or somewhere, a piling, and putting a hole in the side, and then the next morning they're sunk.
Well, they would still be, they would still be liable for any costs incurred and.
Correct, even on the derelict, we're, we're still going through the criminal process.
Right, right, yeah, I don't see a problem with this.
But that's just a suggestion I was gonna throw out about that.
Yes, Sandy, if you're willing to make some phone calls and see.
We have towboat and sea tow.
I think we could definitely think about talking that over. At least, can we maybe put that on the, on next month's agenda? Discussion of maybe revolving emergency tow fund?
And then I just wanted to put a reminder out there.
If there are other port authorities in the state of Florida that have such a fund, instead of like reinventing the wheel, if we could maybe take a look at them, for example?
I'll, I'll try to do some, some research on that.
Then just a rip, no, that's good, just a reminder, the St. Augustine Harbor Safety and Security Committee meeting is the sixth of December on a Monday at nine AM at the BOCC. Usually one BOCC commissioner sits in it, so I didn't know if anybody had free time that they could sit in it as well.
What was the date again?
December sixth, it's a Monday, it's at nine AM. And usually Commissioner Waldron sits on it from the BOCC. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chris Pasetti, St. Augustine Fire Department. Just to give you an update, I don't have the total number of hours. We were underway, we had ten, a total of ten May Day calls during the north, nor'easter that came through. One was on the North Shoal, and the other ones were pretty much right in the downtown area. I think Jim mentioned it, none of the vessels actually broke free of the mooring field. I think the harbor master, Eric Malden, does an excellent job keeping those things maintained, so happy to say none of them came from the city mooring field itself. The other nine vessels, five of them ended up being bridge strikes. I'm not sure how many people were total pulled off of their boats. I know we had a total that we were actively involved in from our, from our fire department, and then the county fire and the sheriff's office all assisted. We had one that had two adults, a small child, and then we later found out they had their, their dogs, a dog and cat aboard. They were, that was the boat that turned about ninety degrees underneath the boat, was starting to take on water pretty quick. They were woken up to that bridge strike, so they said that he did his anchor watch at like five AM, and the next thing he knew, he was woken up to the, the bridge striking, and they tilted about, listed about ninety degrees, so really fortunate those, that call turned out well. The other ones, you know, we had some of them pinned against the bridge, and some of them ended up over at the City Marina as we got through, so it was quite an eventful.
Chris, can you approach the microphone a little bit?
Sure.
I think some of the, some of the crowds having a hard time hearing you.
Yeah, so, yeah, total ten, ten calls, I believe we ran on. One of them being on the shoals, five were bridge strikes, and it was an eventful weekend, but the, happy to tell you, the, the fire department guys performed well, so did our partners from the sheriff's office and them, so.
That, that big sailboat that was up against the seawall?
Yeah, the endless summer.
Where did he break loose? Was he just tied up in the bay, or was he?
So he was tied up in the bay, he ended up broke free, and I don't remember that captain's name, but he did a heck of a job. He actually found himself. Carlos, he ended up in the middle of the mooring field, right off the fort, and did a great job trying to keep the boat from striking anything. Yeah, I think it was seventy-three foot vessel that he was kinda tangled up in there, but never struck any other vessels. When we got there, of course, he called and his motor burned up, so he called, thought he had a fire aboard as, as we got there and started to assist him, but he did a heck of a job. But yeah, I can't say enough great things about him.
I think he did too, and I saw his ground tackle, and it was massive. Hundred foot of massive chain to go with it, and the line snapped.
Yeah, yep, he did a great job, so. Any other questions for our, our events of that week? All right?
Yeah, I don't think so.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you. Any other government representatives? No, Secretary of Treasury's report.
October actually is the first month of the fiscal, first month of the new fiscal year, so in the city police law enforcement overtime of the eight thousand, nothing was spent, really, the only thing that was spent was in this sheriff's department, St. John's County, of eleven hundred and fifty-three dollars, and that was probably done in September, but paid in October. The funds available on the Florida State Board of Administration is twenty-three thousand one hundred and sixty-nine in the operating account to date the balance, and that should say funds available October, not September, two hundred and twenty thousand one thirty. In the money market account, there is nine hundred and eighty-six thousand four forty. In the reserve, of course, we keep the fifteen, the one point five million, so the total funds that we have available to us are two million seven twenty-nine seven thirty-nine. Of the taxes budgeted, the new year, it's six hundred and twenty-one thousand two eighty-three, we've received ten thousand six sixty-five so far. We're gonna get quite a bit in November, and that's it.
Elise, is the reserve money market not an interest yielding account?
That's the only interest yielding account, is the money market account.
How, how can we get interest on the reserve?
It's all in one account. They're in one account.
So you're, you're posting interest from the money market count, a general, in general, into just the general money market account?
Wait, one person, someone just explain it to me, that's all.
Sorry, so it's, it's, that's being reserved on paper, but not in actuality, it is all one account, so all the interest is just being credited to the non-reserve.
That's the fifteen, that's one point five minutes of amount we decided to save.
Correct.
Yeah.
Alright, that's all.
Good, uh, great, that brings us to approval of minutes. Any modifications to the minutes? There are nothing, do I have a motion to approve?
I motion, make the motion.
Second?
Check.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? Great, engineering report?
Other than the two items listed under old business, I don't have anything additional to add.
Okay, great, so we'll.
Can we ask questions with engineer?
Sure.
Can we get a, a video or something of Summer Haven from above, from the damage of the storm? Has something, anything been done on that? Drone video or something?
Do we have it, or?
Could we get that?
Sure, yeah.
It looks like the whole berm's gone, and the road's gone.
The, most of the berm, of the FEMA berm that was constructed recently is gone, the, actually, the ports dune that was constructed originally is still performing well.
Which is set back a little further, actually, what about twenty, at least twenty feet further back, isn't it?
At least that, plus there's a lot more volume in that.
So that berm is still there and the plantings?
Absolutely.
So there's, is there any way that we could, and maybe, that's what I was gonna ask the county lady, can we get any kind of drone video of what the damage?
Yeah, actually, we've, we've taken drone videos, so we can, I can provide that through Elise.
That would be great, thank you.
Great, that brings us to old business, item A, purchase of radiation detector. We, there were some outstanding questions, maybe, on the part of the port, some of the commissioners, maybe? Is that right?
I'm all for it.
Jane, maybe?
Yeah, you know, same questions that I, I had before, I think there are opportunities through federal grants to law enforcement, through the Department of Homeland Security, countering weapons of mass destruction. I, I am personally not in favor of this particular funding request, but I, I just would have liked to have seen an exploration of other funding sources before coming to us first.
Yes ma'am.
Especially the county.
I can tell you, one of the things that we sought out was the, the port security grant, is that one of the one you're referring to? So cybersecurity's really their big thing right now, and they can't officially tell you, but if you're not seeking out for the larger ports for cybersecurity, you're won't even be considered for the second round of the opportunity, really. So that's kinda the, the biggest issue on that, as far as that specific grant. We had the class, and I believe we saw you out there too while we were out there with the, the backpacks and.
They were working all day.
Crowd looking through it, so unfortunately, we weren't allowed to invite some of you guys to that training, we attempted to, to open up a slot so we could bring you, but the, the DHS guys would not allow it. But it is a, you know, if you look at the Small Vessel Initiative for Homeland Security, it's one of the top priorities for it, and that's what makes it important to us. The small little, you know, harbors and inlets and stuff are really their main point of concern, because of those larger ones, they already have the funding or the, the static detectors as they come through, so, so that's what kinda ultimately led us to you guys. The other part is, coming to you as a joint, or as a joint collective whole, it allows us to purchase that as one unit, because, you know, if you go to the county, their hazmat guys are gonna say, oh, no, no, we, we want this one instead of that one. The sheriff's office bomb guys are gonna say, no, get that one, and then none of our equipment talks to each other. So we, we run into that issue as well, so that's kinda what brought it as a collective forefront, and what ultimately brought us to you guys for it.
And if I can also, if you don't mind, I can speak on the port security grant. We've applied for the port security grant multiple times, that's what funded part of our dock, that you guys funded the other part, as well as FINE, that funded most of our vessels too as well. The last three years we've applied, they've denied us. We've asked for a vessel for the river, we've asked for repowering, and partially because it, it doesn't involve cybersecurity. They have, they're given a focus each year, and if it doesn't involve that, it goes right on down the list. And all depends also what the captain of the port priorities are, and things like the river and those stuff that we're seeking funding for, they're not, it's not a high priority for them. So, and then resonating with Chris said, rather than all of us come up here and kinda do the pirate thing where we all kind of apply for our grants, and go, oh, I want this, this is kinda why we all got together, and said, this is what we need as a group, and that's why we came to you as a group this time, so.
And we did see, the port security grant we are applying for this year, we're doing it for a joint maritime complex for a million dollars for the port security grant to fund, so we are going for that grant. We did, I am the statewide coordinator for waterborne response for the Regional Domestic Security Task Force in the seven regions for the state of Florida. We did put RAD and Nuke detectors in there, but anything waterborne this year did not make the cut for funding because of the cut that came from the presidential guidelines for homeland security this year. So we did try that grant for Regional Domestic Security Task Force, that was a FEMA grant, and we just didn't make the cut for it.
And what was, what was the total you were looking for?
I believe it was about twelve thousand dollars, eleven-five, somewhere in that range, I wanna say.
Yeah, I don't have that sheet that I gave you guys originally.
This stuff gets upgraded, it's just a software upgrade, you know, I had to buy new pagers every couple of years.
Most of the older stuff, some of the stuff we use on our engines. Technology doesn't change a whole lot for like three years.
Right. So yeah, this is not gonna be an ongoing expense every couple of years, you're not anticipating?
No, sir, no. But what we do see, I'm sure, is us coming together and kind of pulling our project, and maybe like in the same sense that Sydney met with you guys ahead of time, we can meet with you guys ahead of time and figure out what your priorities are, more fine tune our requests.
Yeah, I mean, I guess for me, it just kinda came out of the blue, the, the.
Yeah, I mean, I guess for me, it just kind of came out of the blue, the sort of randomness of the radiation detection, especially out on the open water. It just didn't seem to be really honing in on an exact target. So I just want to make sure that we're spending our money wisely and making sure that you guys have the right equipment to do your jobs. I'm certainly not going to stand on the side of a vote that, you know, leads to weapons of mass destruction hitting St. Augustine, but I do want all funding sources to be explored first for issues like this going forward. And definitely, one of my concerns was just, it just really did seem very random, but hopefully it works and gets the job done for you guys, but those were my concerns.
Yeah, I share those concerns. It feels like the benefit is mostly going to be felt outside the district and so I'm not sure it makes the most sense for the taxpayers of the port district to be footing this bill, but it sounds like it's kind of a done deal anyway, so maybe we should just go ahead and make a motion.
Chairman Brown, just for extra information, at the nine sixteen meeting, the proposal made was for ten units at a cost of one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars each for a total funding request of thirteen thousand five hundred.
Thirteen thousand, okay.
One three five zero zero.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No, it's just me. Good, all right, motion passes. Congratulations, fellas. Next up is Summer Haven sand fencing, Friends of Summer Haven.
I could start. We did apply for and receive the sand fencing permit from the DEP.
State your name.
Oh, sorry.
I know, we all know you, but.
Ken Craig Taylor Engineering. So we've received the sand fencing permit. We can, we're outside of turtle nesting season right now. As long as we get the fence built before May first of next year, we're fine. If we, we could theoretically go past May first, but there's a bunch of additional conditions that have to be met, including monitoring for sea turtles and things like that, but I, this is something that certainly shouldn't, probably could be done well before then, so. The question's really coming down to how are we going to move forward with actually constructing the project?
That's where I come in. Good afternoon, commissioners. Terry Parker, nine one eight one, Gene Johnson Road. Want to thank you for allowing Taylor Engineering to secure the fence permit. And with your permission, the Friends of the Summer Haven are willing to see the process through from accepting bids and overseeing the project from installation to completion, if that meets with your approval.
The benefit there being that we don't have to pay Taylor a ton of money to do that.
That's right.
Right.
So you volunteer to put the fences up, in other words?
No, we volunteer to obtain bids from hopefully local contractors that are qualified to do that, present them to the board for your approval and proceed from there.
I'd rather go through our secretary's office. I don't mean any disrespect, Mr. Parker, I don't. I know you've worked hard, a lot of people have down at Summer Haven, but I'm just, I'm personally of the mind that after this last storm and even before that, when I saw what, how the berm was made, that there was asphalt in it, I pulled out big, I swear to you, I pulled out ballast stones and old electrical lines and now that's all on the beach. I just don't want to spend another dime at Summer Haven until we get a legitimate scientific study to tell us how to move forward. I understand you already have the code, that's just my opinion.
If I could speak to that, I think the sand fence has proven to be beneficial in dune restoration and we are willing to undertake the project or oversee it, you know, push it through and I think that would be a benefit to the port, to the dune, and it has withstood the storm very well, considering the conditions that we experienced down there. My estimate, Ken made different, was we lost two or three feet of the top of the berm at most. Most of the, all the vegetation really is still there, except right there on the very edge. Very few places where the water actually rolled over. It held up extremely well and sand fencing, I believe, would enhance that over time.
Do we have a sense, even a very, very vague ballpark of what sand fencing would cost for that dune?
Oh, boy. The most recent, the contractor for the FEMA berm constructed sand fencing along, using the same design, basically, but it was with a much smaller dune that was constructed out there and it was just, it was rolled into a bunch of the line items for that project. I don't know off the top of my head. I could certainly get that and by the time next meeting rolls around, I could give you something that we could compare to.
Right.
Well, if they're going to get bids.
I could secure a minimum of three bids, I believe, by next meeting.
Yeah, at this point, I think all we're voting on is to allow you to move forward with seeking, soliciting bids.
That's correct.
So there's really not a whole lot that we're tying ourselves to here, so.
I have a question.
Because basically you're just asking for the permission to get the bids, is what you're asking?
Yes, basically, that's it now and we are offering to see the project through with the board's approval after review of bids.
Then we can say it under the next meeting.
Right.
Yes.
Can I make a statement here? And this is because, first of all, it's not my opinion, as I was going through the board records when I was first elected. A fellow named Ken Crowder used to be a consultant for this board and he's a pretty smart man. He ran the port of Jacksonville and the airport at the same time, Jack's Port or whatever that's called. And he, in there was a, a letter from him stating why this board needed an executive director. You see, an executive director, we all have, I'm a travel agent, we have lawyers and real estate agents and whatnot, we don't really know what we're doing in the world out there getting stuff done and you can't just let contractors take everything. So an executive director is that person that works as a ten ninety-nine employee, but does the legwork, just like, you know, getting the bids, doing things that you don't need to pay four hundred dollar engineers an hour or what have you, and they're directly responsible to the taxpayer. They go out and do inspections, they make sure things in our contracts and insurance hasn't been bought, and we have multiple people, Mr. Ken Crowder, we have a fellow named Bill Huffman who's come to me, and also Roy Jaeger. We could have an executive director in a skinny minute to do the legwork and follow up and make sure that when we do a project, the taxpayers get it fulfilled in full and that person works for this commission, is not a contractor.
Jane, you had a question?
I did. Regarding the sand fencing, I get that you're not allowed to install it during sea turtle nesting season, but it becomes a permanent structure regardless, even after nesting season, right?
Right. You can, we actually could install it during nesting season, but there's a bunch of additional conditions that have to be met while constructing. It can stay out there, once it's installed, it's in until you decide you want to remove it.
So I have personally witnessed plenty of false crawls due to sand fencing. I personally have a real big problem with sand fencing due to its impacts on sea turtles and also I have seen gophers on the flip side, on the land side, trying to get over the dunes and encountering the sand fencing right there at Summer Haven. So I just think from an ecological standpoint, you know, it's a measure of last resort and I know people are trying like hell to save this area, but I've got real concerns with the impacts that this is going to have on wildlife. So I am not in favor of soliciting bids for that reason. I would like to see an alternative proposal that doesn't have the same sort of ecological impacts that sand fencing does.
Ken, would you please elaborate on the location of the fence?
So this sand fence is positioned basically along the toe, the landward toe of the dune. So it's not on the seaward side of the dune, it's on the landward side of it. So those false crawls would probably, I mean, the turtle would have to actually go up and over the dune in order to be affected by the.
But I have seen gophers hit it on the landward side.
That, if that's the case, I'm not, I haven't personally seen that, but not saying that it doesn't happen.
The real fix for the backside of that berm is rabble and mangroves. See, as I'm saying, I'm not against doing a good project, I'm against throwing money away, good money after bad, is all.
The berm has a twenty-foot level top on it, or did when it was constructed, and it's pretty much maintained that, it's actually built up and that's where the vegetation is. And the proposed location for the sand fence is on the west side or opposite the ocean side of that twenty-foot vegetated top, just for clarification.
The Summer Haven riverside, is it still cliffting there pretty badly? I'm going to go look and get pictures.
You know, it had some sloughing off during these high water conditions last week, yes.
You think the sand fence would help that? Would the sand, would that help on that type of activity?
Depending on the direction of the wind, it won't hurt.
Now, I'm not trying to sound stupid.
I'm sorry?
I'm not trying to sound stupid about what I'm about to say, but we just had a whole line of sand fencing with that brand-new berm that's gone, can't we just go down there and, I mean, that was like a mile of sand fence, can we just go get it? Because now it's.
I don't know.
It literally washed away into the ocean?
Yeah, I don't know where it is or.
Yeah, I have no idea.
Y'all missed an opportunity there. Because this is only, all we're voting on is information at this point, I think. We're not committing ourselves to any spending or any course of action. I'm just going to move to allow the Friends of the Summer Haven River to solicit bids for sand fencing. We'll have an opportunity to review those bids and also decide whether or not we want to move forward with that at a future meeting, but I so move.
I'll second it. I agree.
So all in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Aye, that's fine.
Okay. I believe that was unanimous, right?
And yes, yeah, yes.
Right. Good.
All right, thank you and I will see you again next week.
I have one more thing to, it's not about that, it's something else. What Sandy was talking about, as far as my, about an executive director. I'll put it off until comments at the end because I'm losing my voice.
Okay. With that, we move to old business C, Army Corps Permit Extension.
Not a whole lot to update. We did submit the letter ahead of the one month before it expired, the permit expired. We have received acknowledgement of receipt of the letter and that's the last we've heard. So as long as, until they make a formal determination regarding our request for an extension, the permit remains active.
Do you have a sense of how long it's going to take for them?
I wish I did.
Any other comments on that? No. New business, A, presentation, RE impaired water quality. Jen Lombard.
A little backdrop. I have invited Jen Lombard, our Matanzas River Keeper, to make a presentation on the status of our water quality here in the region. It is within the mission of the port authority to monitor such things and apparently DEP and the Water Management District have, unfortunately, don't have the resources to be doing the job adequately, so I've asked Jen to give this presentation and I hope it informs all of us moving forward.
Yeah, and I sent my PowerPoint presentation to Ms. Kemper. Is that something you're able to queue up for us?
No, I mean, I forwarded it to everybody.
Oh, okay. Is there not a way to show it during the meeting? I thought we were going to get to see it. I mean, there are so many pretty pictures in it.
The video is, whatever you forward it to me, I forward it to the commissioner.
Okay.
So if, do you have a?
Yeah, I have another, I emailed it to you, I have it on my iPad, I've got it plugged right by my. Okay. Okay, no, no, no.
So, here. I don't know which one it is.
Oh, there it is.
Okay. All right, so this is not off. Well, I'm going to take this out.
I wish I had brought my laptop, I would have just put it up here.
Yeah. For some reason, this is not coming on. Actually, the key reason it's not coming on.
Oh, it's just coming on very slowly.
Oh, it's doing updates.
Oh, no.
Awesome.
Are you potentially prepared to do this presentation without visuals?
I mean, yeah, it's not going to be nearly as fun.
A lot of like hand gestures.
I can describe the maps to you, I guess.
How about just come back next month and do the full presentation?
Give it a couple more minutes, I think it'll be.
We only have till five thirty, P and Z is coming out, so.
If it's possible to even do that.
Is there another item on the agenda that you guys want to address while this is booting up or? That's a great idea.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Why don't we go ahead and go to new business B, port property lease request, Clay Meek.
Yeah, I'm going to start with my page of Cole Blow's book. It's not nearly as fancy as that going to be, but it's black and white.
Clay, you have to come up here and state your name.
I will, once I get these processed up, so they can see what I'm talking about.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Clay Meek, Port General Counsel, and it's a two-page handout that essentially summarizes, we were contacted by an attorney that represents a couple of homeowners that were interested in building a dock. They had approached the city of St. Augustine and were, I guess, exploring or getting information on the permitting process there, but the dock potentially would be at least a portion of it on top of submerged land owned by the district. And so the question came up, what, if anything, how would the port deal with that as far as approve it, not approve it? And what I've got there is just a short memo that sort of outlines what I would submit would be the concerning questions to be asked to decide how much or little the port would be interested in approving that type of project. And it's also a memo that I tried to phrase in terms of both the micro and the macro in that we have currently this one question, but it's reasonable to assume that this issue may come up again in the future. So how would we want to deal with this both now and going forward?
Who's the attorney?
Um, let's see if I have the gentleman's name here. I'm not sure I have it in front of me. I can provide that to all the commissioners afterwards.
What's the address? Where's the home at on Hospital Creek? Is it?
No address of the particular property was given. It was just a piece of property.
Well, if it's a port property, it must be pretty much close, it must be close down there to the bridge, I guess.
Potentially, but anyway, the memo outlines again sort of the questions that I would submit the port would want to have answered or look at as far as approving it. And also, and I tried to stress this very much in the memo, the five potential responses I could come up with, whether I thought they were good responses or bad ones, that's every possible response I could think of.
I wish he would come to the port first before you spend this many hours on a project we don't even know if we're interested in, that's all. Why didn't he call a commissioner?
Well, with all due respect, I don't think a commissioner could have answered this. This is a question for the entire commission.
No, but a commissioner can sponsor it in front of the board. That's why you contact your elected officials. I'm just a little bit in dismay how much work went into this before we even discussed it, that's all.
Anyway, go ahead, continue, Clay, go ahead.
Yes, sir. So, anyway, the five possible items are a licensing agreement, which is admittedly, it's a chicken dressed up as a duck. It's largely the same thing as a lease, but by going the licensing agreement, you don't have some of the legal protections that are afforded tenants if you were dealing with it as a lease. The other three are to simply refuse it outright. We'd have very limited information on this current request, but, you know, depending on the size of the project going forward, whether it's a small dock that wouldn't bother anybody versus some monstrous thing that would interrupt the waterway, some you might want to say yes to and go license or lease agreement, others you might just say outright refusal. And then, the other two possible responses are listed. Again, I do not recommend either of those responses for the reasons stated, but there is the option of simply ignoring the request, and if they build it, they build it. There's a significant imminent, adverse possession risk with that. And then, there's also always the option of making an offer to sell the land, which, again, I highly recommend, but I tried to put every five options I could think of that you could respond with.
Can I make a comment about insurance on this? I used to manage a property right on Hospital Creek. It's recently sold with riparian rights. Own the land under the water out to the channel. It's not the entire creek, number one. It's only to the navigable channel. So, one time I wanted to know, well, you know, if the city, no place else does that, just Florida, the city decides to give public property away to private homeowners, what is my, I'm managing a place, what is my insurance liability? So, I called them up. They said, "We don't care what the city, the state, the county says. Below that high timeline, you have no insurance coverage. They do not acknowledge it as private property." So, just something to think of when you're talking about liability.
Also, the city of St. Augustine is highly proprietarial about, territorial about its mooring fields and does not allow docks to go into those mooring fields without an application. Quite frankly, this request is just lacking way too much information. We can't make a decision without location, but as a preliminary matter, I mean, I would strongly discourage the port from allowing any part of our submerged lands to be used for private property. That is going to have significant precedential impact on moving forward. You know, if we let the cat out of the bag one time, we're going to get future requests, and if it's going to potentially impact navigable waterways, that's to the detriment of the public, which we serve. So, I don't think we have enough information with this particular inquiry to even move forward, but...
No, and to be clear, I don't think, we're not voting on anything here. This was purely a primer kind of on this issue in general, right?
And this was actually, Commissioner Flowers made an excellent point about not spending money until it's necessary to spend the money. This was purely just, someone reached out, here's the concepts, find out what the commission is or is not comfortable with as far as going forward. And then, using that information, decide what additional information or research needs to be done in order to figure out how you want to proceed with that. This is purely just that we were reached out to, here's our options, what is the commission's desire to deal with? And Commissioner West's point, very well taken, we don't have anywhere near the specifics to say yes or no to this. The question would be if the commission, as a majority, says, "We're never gonna lease it, we're never gonna license it, we're never gonna give away, we're never gonna sell it, period," then there's really no point to look into any of this any further. If a majority of the commission says, "If the project was small enough and had a small enough footprint or impact on the waterway, and potentially, they could come forward and say how it would be a benefit to the waterways, we might consider it," then conceptually, the commission would decide, "Would you consider it as a license, or would you prefer to consider it as a lease? Would you prefer to consider it as something else?" And I can prepare, to the extent the commission wishes it, additional details as to what a license agreement would look like, what it would require, or what I would submit it would best require as far as insurance permitting, compliance with laws. This is purely, nobody's asking to do it. This was just somebody reaching out. We're in the formative process, what would we have to do? And this was the easiest, cheapest, and best way to get it on the commission's radar to get feedback.
No, sir, it is not. You simply had to tell that attorney or the homeowner to contact a commissioner to sponsor that request. They could come in here and answer our questions, but instead, you wrote two pages, and how much did this cost us? And it's taken us nowhere. How much did you bill us to do that? Because we answer those questions, not our legal counsel. They need to be here. So, if somebody calls you, it'd just be nice if you refer it to the commission.
I will continue to operate as I seem appropriate.
Don't spend our money until we tell you it's okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to comment.
Go ahead.
What I would like is the address. The main thing I want to know is the address. It could be Comanche Island, it could be in the city of St. Augustine mainland, but also, I'd like to know how they know we own the land.
Oh, that's, that's public. That's public record.
It's public record, but we need a legal description or something to find it. A tax ID number. I could locate it immediately.
You could go to the tax collector's office.
Well, they still have IDs, parcel numbers.
Yeah, but you could do that without it when you go to the office.
The location, the address of the house, and the location of the property that supposedly we own. And I know we own a lot of property in that area, but I just don't know exactly where this is.
Be that if our property's over there by the boat ramp, we only own it to the, again, to center of that creek. And if they're coming in from the other side, which is the only places there's houses, how much further would they be?
Well, a lot of them have Hospital Creek frontage.
Right, I say, all those downwater street have Hospital Creek frontage, but the riparian rights only go to the middle of the creek, to the channel. So, if we're on the other side from them, we may not actually own the property they're looking to build on.
Right, but that would limit the size of their lot.
Right, because it doesn't encompass the whole creek, is my understanding. It only goes to the center.
So, at this point, there's nothing to act on, it sounds like. It was just purely informational and...
Well, just an informational, if, to gather additional details and to respond to the attorney with anything other than come in front of us with your entire packet, and you may or may not be wasting your time, because we may ultimately vote that we would never do anything. I mean, the potential action to be taken today would be, depending on the details of the project, is this something I should tell the attorney? It's a maybe, it's a no, it's if we did say yes to it, we would only say yes to it or entertain it as a license, a lease, or what? That's the only potential activity or feedback from the commission, just to be able to say, give them an idea of what to do.
I think the, I mean, the simplest thing is for them, if they want to even pursue this at all, is to give us a plan view of the home, the address, the structure, how far it's gonna stick out into the creek. I mean, if I had that in my hands, I could make a decision instantly. And so, and I agree, I think the others would agree to that as well, wouldn't you?
Yeah, there's nothing, you can't tell them not to come here. So, if they want to come and, you know, provide us some information and actually, you know...
That's what they're ultimately gonna have to do anyway. Our attorney doesn't handle our port business and shouldn't be answering questions. Just call up any commissioner and ask for a sponsor to speak.
Well, let's just say, so what are we doing here?
I don't think we're doing anything except saying that we're not, we're not denying it outright, so they're welcome to submit information if they want to.
If they come back, what is it we want?
I think Clay enumerated a pretty good list of things that we would want here, right? We need, you know, we need the plans, we need information about what of our property is actually gonna be impacted. We want more information about potential impacts, both kind of on the public's ability to use the waterway, potential environmental impacts, you know? We need, we need to be able to actually make an informed decision. So, if they want us to make a decision, they need to give us the information to make that decision.
Another one would be what the high tide and low tide marks are in relation to that structure. Because if we're sticking out, that we're extreme low tide, somebody couldn't even get by there, would be a deal breaker.
Now, Mr. Way, see, he's doing right, you're telling him a bunch of information, so he is now gonna go back, continue to bill the board at 200-something an hour to speak to this attorney, when, again, he's not supposed to be doing our business. They're supposed to be coming to the port, and I'd really like, would you send me, Elise, an invoice when he sends that in for this particular work? I just want to know what it's costing us. They should be here talking to this board, not wasting our money.
So, just, I'm clear then, I will relay all the questions that were posed in the memo that you want that information, as well as the questions that have been added, and they can come back.
That's fine.
And I'd like to put in here that we're not wasting the money, because he's doing a service to us. We hire him to work for us.
Sir, we have to approve this, sending him to work for us.
Sandy, let him finish.
He's working for an attorney, not a...
I understand your point, but still...
Well, it'd be nice, because he does a lot of work off the books without anybody knowing, including fulfilling public records requests for some strange reason.
All right, I believe that is the conclusion of New Business B, so we can get back to New Business A.
I can see it over there, too, Tom.
Jesus.
You don't get a lot of sleep, do you?
I'm left-handed, this is really hard for me.
Chairman, while we're waiting, a number of years ago, before any of you were on the board, our consultant...
Down at the top, there's a PowerPoint logo.
Presented a master plan to us, but no, this is separate, presented us a list of all properties we own, and that's gotta be somewhere in the file.
It's in our book.
Yeah, it's in, yeah.
When Ken Crowder gave us that book.
Right.
I could copy those.
Are you talking about the book they gave you when you first got elected?
Yeah, that huge binder. I've got, I've got that at home somewhere, too. I'd be happy to try to scan that and share it with the board.
Yeah, it's in, oh, you got it, I was looking. Yeah.
It's in your Dubliners tech.
And I, I'm happy to try and wing the presentation without a PowerPoint.
I mean, it's in, that's, that's where it is, and that's where you have it. The only other thing I would think of is if you, if it should go in the, you checked that one, you go to the other one, you know, hold on.
Well, Jen, how about this? Just kind of give us some background, and we can always follow up next month with a broader presentation.
We threatened its safety, and now it's cooperating. It's right there.
Yeah.
Just 10 or 15 minutes for PowerPoint to open up, and we're gonna be good to go.
All right, there you go. You got it.
No, no worries. I will...
This is, should pull up now.
I mean, theoretically, eventually. So, I'll just start talking, and then somebody flag me if it actually loads, and then I can catch up to where I'm at in the PowerPoint presentation. So, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Jen Lombard. I am your Matanzas River Keeper. I've had the pleasure of meeting some of you individually before, but I've never had the opportunity to speak before the board, so thank you, Commissioner West, for inviting me this afternoon. For those of you who aren't familiar with our organization, Matanzas River Keeper is a nonprofit, non-governmental organization, and we work to protect the health of the Guanatalamada Matanzas watershed through advocacy, education, and community engagement. And so, that includes everything from working on local projects that might be detrimental to our waterways, to working on statewide advocacy, to better protect water quality, to getting people out on the waterways and helping them to better connect with our natural areas in hopes of engendering a sense of stewardship to protect our waterways and natural resources. And so, we are Matanzas River Keeper. We're located right here in St. Augustine, Florida, but there are about 350 waterkeeper organizations that work across the entire globe. We're located in 44 different countries, and basically, we work to protect the waterways that our communities rely on. And so, waterways, waterkeepers come in all different shapes and sizes. We've got scientists, we've got attorneys, we've got educators, we've got military veterans, and we all basically just focus on trying to do whatever is necessary to serve as the voice of our waterways. And so, just to kind of give you a thousand-foot view of some of the projects that we work on, so we look at local comprehensive plans and land development codes to try and make recommendations for changes that'll be more protective to our waterways. We work on legislative advocacy. When the state is looking at new bills or new laws that are going to affect how water quality is protected, or things that might be detrimental to it, we work on a little bit of an advocacy role there. We work on statewide regulations. So, when the state is looking at how stormwater ponds are required to be built and maintained and operated, or septic systems, or wastewater treatment facilities, we're kind of involved in that process a little bit as well. And then, we work on land conservation as well as community engagement projects. So, the bulk of what I wanted to kind of explain to you today was just a really high-level overview of water quality generally within the district and in our local waterways. Ooh, yay!
Perfect timing.
Not bad. Let's see here, slideshow. I'm gonna try to press as few buttons as possible, so that I don't make it angry. All right, there we go. So, I figure the best way to kind of introduce this topic is to give you a little bit of Clean Water Act 101, and I recognize that not everybody gets as excited about water laws I do, so try and stick with me here. I'll try and keep it really high level so that your eyes don't glaze over too badly. But basically, the way that state water regulation works is that every single waterway in the state of Florida is assigned a classification based on its designated use. And so, you've got kind of this sliding scale of designated uses from Class 1 waterways to Class 5 waterways. And so, your Class 1 waterways are your potable water, your Class 2 is shellfish propagation. The vast majorities of water in the state of Florida are designated Class 3, which is fishing and primary contact recreation. Class 4 is agricultural waterways, and Class 5 is navigation and industrial use. And so, as you can kind of see here, you kind of want the most protective standards to be applied to the Class 1 waterways, that's our drinking water. We need that to be really, really clean in order to mitigate any public health and safety risks. And then, your Class 5 waterways don't necessarily need to have as strong of water quality standards. So, there is a list of regulated pollutants that the state manages, and for each of those classifications of water, there's a threshold of water quality for each of those pollutants. And so, what the state does is they go out, they do water quality sampling, and then they assess the waterways across the state to determine whether they are meeting the water quality standards for that particular waterway's designated use. And if they are, we're good to go. If they're not, those waterways are declared impaired. That's kind of the term that's used to describe a waterway that's not meeting its water quality standards. And then, if a waterway is declared impaired, then the state develops what's called a TMDL, a Total Maximum Daily Load, which I like to describe as a pollution diet. The state is basically trying to figure out how much of this pollutant can this waterway assimilate and still be able to heal itself back to where it's meeting this water quality standard. And in order to meet that TMDL, the state will develop something called a BMAP, which is a Basin Management Action Plan, which is basically the projects and the plan that the state is going to implement to try and meet that pollution reduction goal. So, that's kind of water quality 101. And so, I have here just a little bit of a zoomed-in map that talks about some of the local impairments that we have in the waterways here. And some of these might be beyond the scope of this particular district, so I apologize if that's the case. But basically, everything that you're seeing in gray or green there is a waterway that the state has declared impaired. So, that is a waterway that is not currently meeting the water quality standards for its designated use. And like I said earlier, most of the waterways around the state are designated Class 3, but we do locally here have several Class 2 waterways, several shellfish harvest areas. And we're one of the last places in northeast Florida where we do have some Class 2 waterways that are open to shellfish harvest and consumption, which is something that I know a lot of folks are really proud of. And so, these are just a couple of callouts here that I wanted to bring your attention to. As you can see, most of the impairments that we have in our local waterways are for fecal bacteria and nutrient pollution. And so, what the state does is every two years, they will do an assessment of all of the waterways around the state to determine, based on the data that they've collected, whether or not these waterways are meeting their water quality standards or whether they are impaired. And so, what I have here, the state is currently in the process of doing this biennial assessment, and so, what I have here is a list of some of the local waterways and the causative pollutants that, that they have just determined are actually impaired. Something to keep in mind here is that despite the fact that some of these are just now being listed, some of these impairments have existed for quite a while. Unfortunately, the way that the state approaches water quality sampling and testing is they're a bit under-resourced, so it's kind of a triage situation. So, a lot of times, the places that are in really, really bad shape, for example, Indian River Lagoon, Lake Okeechobee, that's where the testing goes, that's where the resources go, that's where they're focusing on making their TMDLs and their BMAPs. Meanwhile, areas like ours, where we certainly have some water quality issues, but we don't have massive large mammal and fish die-offs, we're kind of put on the back burner. And so, it's kind of an awkward situation where things aren't terrible here, but they're heading in the wrong direction. And so, it's a little bit of a challenge to try and light a fire under the state to... And so, it's, it's a little bit of a challenge to try and light a fire under the state to, um, pay a little bit more attention to this area, and try and keep things from getting bad, rather than waiting till things get catastrophic and then trying to fix them after the fact. So, like I mentioned earlier, um, a lot of the impairments that we're seeing for pollution locally is from fecal bacteria and nutrients, and, um, unfortunately, a lot of those, um, a lot of those pollutants are associated with urbanization. So, um, as more development comes, you have more stormwater runoff, wastewater treatment facilities, discharging either directly into the waterway or via reclaimed water. Um, we've got a big issue with the land application of biosolids, that is, the solid waste that comes out of wastewater treatment facilities. Um, there was recently a law that prohibited it from being land-applied in South Florida, so a lot of it is getting shipped up towards our neck of the woods for, um, land application and disposal, which means we're seeing heightened phosphorus levels in the St. John's watershed. And then, septic systems, um, wetland loss from development, and aquatic debris and sea level rise are also kind of contributing factors to our pollution issues. If anyone has any questions, feel free to jump in also.
I do. This, um, of this, where would, which one of you things is our number-one problem? Septic system?
So, unfortunately, with water quality issues, it comes from so many different sources that there's really not a silver bullet solution. And another issue is that we aren't completely sure what we're working with. Um, St. Augustine, the city of St. Augustine just last year did a study to try and identify where their septic systems were located. St. John's County doesn't have a comparable map of that at this point, so they don't know how many septic systems there are, they don't know how old they are. They put a request in their legislative budget for this year to try and get funding to do that study, but at this point, there's, there's a lot of knowledge gap that we're kind of struggling against.
So, you know about septic systems, so you know, you're aware of the issues we have?
Oh, yeah.
The one last, one last question about that would be this. Um, I was on the next door, and somebody was talking about the county approved another, uh, thing, that another neighborhood that would be using septic systems. So, I said, "Oh, that's yucky." And Commissioner Dean came back and said, "No, it's not yucky, because it's a new kind of safe septic system." What's that?
So, there are all different types of septic systems that can treat to all different levels, um, and it, it's kind of finicky, because the state is currently in the process of updating their septic system regulations right now. And so, something that we've been watching is that there's almost been a, a little bit of a, a rush to try and get some more applications approved before these new rules go into place. So, there's, there's a little bit of a front-end push to kind of get in under the wire on that, because when septic, when the septic regulations were initially written, they were initially written with public health in mind and not environmental impacts. So, it was really focusing on preventing fecal bacteria from getting into the waterways, but not necessarily nutrients. And what we've realized at this point is that a lot of septic systems are big contributors of nutrients. And so, now the new regulations are being updated specifically to try and be protective for nutrient migration.
So, there may be some way to go septic and be safe.
Yes. Yeah, there, there is certainly a, a correct place for septic systems to be installed. The problem is, a lot of the older ones weren't put in the correct place necessarily, and a lot of them haven't been maintained. So, um, building into the challenges a little bit more, as, as everyone here knows, St. John's County is one of the fastest-growing counties in the state of Florida. This graph, um, that I have here, I just thought was really interesting. So, the St. John's County first adopted its comprehensive plan in nineteen eighty-six, and they tried to project what growth was going to look like by the year two thousand. And those three lines on the bottom are the low, medium, and high-growth projections for the year two thousand. Um, the, the low was just under sixty thousand, the high was just over eighty-five thousand, and that yellow line there is the actual growth in St. John's County, and that is just over a hundred and twenty-three thousand, and it's projected to hit about four hundred thousand by the year twenty forty-five. So, obviously, when the, when the county government started to plan, they, they didn't really, um, do a great job of predicting what the population growth was going to look like for the county. And so, that, that has been a huge challenge, is just the, the rapid urbanization of St. John's County. Um, another challenge, like I mentioned before, are these data gaps. Um, the, the state is really trying to prioritize these areas that are having these catastrophic water quality issues, and so, because of that, our area locally is not prioritized for additional testing. There are some waterways like San Sebastian, like some sections of the Matanzas, where anecdotally, we know that there are water quality issues. We've seen data from Flagler College or the University of Florida that suggests that there are some fecal and nutrient issues, but since the state doesn't have that data, it's not considering it when determining if it's impaired, which triggers the TMDL development, which triggers the BMAP process. So, unfortunately, we're, we're running into, um, some issues where we know the data exists, we just need to figure out how to get that data uploaded into the state's, um, watershed information network, so that the state can consider it when it's determining where to allocate its resources. And then, infrastructure funding is always a huge challenge. On doing those septic-to-sewer conversion projects, or first identifying where the septic systems are, so that we can do the septic-to-sewer projects, and then updating wastewater treatment facilities to, um, to treat the effluent to a higher level is also something that can be really helpful. And so, solutions, um, we do a waterway cleanup program. It's called the Litter Getter. We've got a twenty-four-foot Carolina skiff, where we take folks out on the water to pick up trash and aquatic debris. We generally get about ten thousand pounds a year between just small plastic bags, straws, et cetera, and, um, parts of docks and lumber and tires that people throw out there. Um, septic-to-sewer is obviously going to be a high priority, once the county is able to identify where those areas are. Reclaimed water, I put on there as a solution with an asterisk. Um, reclaimed water is basically where, instead of directly discharging the effluent from a wastewater treatment facility, they use it for irrigation, and a lot of the new developments have, um, reclaimed water lines put in for their large irrigations, and that can be extremely helpful, because you're offsetting the consumption of potable water by using reclaimed water. The issue is that reclaimed water is often very high in nutrients, so if it's being used for irrigation on land that is also being fertilized, then you still have heightened nutrient runoff from those parcels a lot of time. And then outreach and education, obviously, is extremely important. We've got a lot of folks moving here from other places, where they might not understand how the ecosystems work, or they might not understand how what they do in their yard does affect the water, even if they don't live on the water. So, that's something that we work on, and then we're also looking for funding for increased monitoring and data entry, to try and fill some of those gaps that the state's missing. So...
Where are y'all getting your funding right now?
So, we are a nonprofit, non-governmental organization. We are member-driven and community foundation grants.
Community foundation.
Mm-hmm. And so, that is one of the reasons I asked Jen to come, is because I would like for this board to start considering, it's not an urgent request, but I, I really hate functioning without that, that data, and if we have the data, if we're getting it from Flagler, if we're getting it from UF Whitney Lab, um, if all it takes is someone to process it into DEP system, and you say it way more eloquently than I do, then that is something that I think the public deserves to know. Um, and I, I'm not sure how much that would cost, but I, I think it basically requires a low-tech data entry person that has the patience to deal with that. So, it's just something I, I want this board to just keep in the back of their mind, um, and I've encouraged Jen to, you know, maybe come up with some sort of proposal, but I wanted her at least to educate this board on, on the data that we are missing going forward with our water pollution issues. So, um, anyway.
That, when that data gets in, or you're gonna, is that public, you'd be public data available online?
Yeah, yeah, the, the state manages the watershed information network, which is a publicly accessible data set. And basically, when the state does its biennial assessment every two years, they look at the watershed information network, and that's the data that they're considering to determine whether or not a waterway is or isn't meeting water quality standards. The problem is, the state doesn't have the resources to test, so we've got, like, the San Sebastian hasn't had regular testing since two thousand fourteen-ish, um, there are other areas.
San Sebastian?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, boy, you better be careful going up there and testing that water.
But, Flagler students have been testing water in the San Sebastian, and it is showing that there are some pollution issues up there. The problem is, if Flagler's data is not in UF's watershed information network, the state doesn't consider that. So, we know that there's an impairment, we know that there's pollution, but the state doesn't recognize it, because they aren't considering Flagler's data.
But they will consider UF's data.
Only if somebody uploads it into their system.
If somebody uploads it. Does the GTMRR do this kind of testing, or?
Yeah, so they have, um, several monitoring stations that do real-time monitoring for a lot of different parameters, and then they go out and do grab samples for, um, nutrients, fecal, things like that. But they were in the same situation, where it was just too much of, um, it was too cumbersome to upload the data into the state's system. The reformatting, um, and the, the time commitment that it took was a lot for them, and I think that they have now allocated, um, staff specifically to work on that now, so their information is being considered by the state. But Flagler and the University of Florida, at this point, they don't have the resources, the manpower, to upload their data sets yet.
How is your organization funded?
So, we are a member-driven organization, and we also get community foundation grants.
Thank you.
So, before, um, Jen spends a lot more time, you know, coming up with, uh, I guess it's just a one-page refer, a funding request, but it, it's going to take some resources to find out how much time it would take for a data entry person. Um, before she embarked on that and spent a lot of time and energy on that, I wanted her to at least advise the board on what the situation is, and whether or not we want to greenlight her pursuing, yeah, a funding request to have a data entry person move forward. So, that was kind of the objective. Um, I know this board likes advance notice on funding requests, and I know I do. So, that is, uh, kind of the objective here, to get a little bit, bit of background information and see if there's an appetite on this board, um, to move forward with pulling that proposal together.
Uh, speaking purely for myself, I would say absolutely. Um, the San Sebastian River water quality is something that has come up a number of times over the last few years.
Bad.
It's very bad. Um, one thing I'd be really curious to know, was not on your list, but, um, do you have a sense of what the role of boats, uh, just directly dumping sewage into the water has? Because that's something that has come, I mean, Josh, we've, we've tried and failed a few times to, uh, to, uh, address that here. Uh, I know the San Sebastian in particular is known for being sort of a trap back there, um, so, uh, I don't know, uh, you know, beyond monitoring, sort of looking beyond, I, I mean, I guess it'll come down to convincing the state to take it seriously, and then we just sort of go from there. There's not really any local initiatives that need to go from, from that. But, um, yeah, I, I would absolutely be in favor of, of spending some money to figure out exactly what's going on in San Sebastian, and, and trying to light a fire under the state's feet, do something about it.
Yeah, I think we could do it, 'cause it, I think it'd be under maintenance, water maintenance, for our, for our charter, and, um, I'd be very interested in that. And our grant application is right online, simple.
Well, I know we've only got about ten minutes left, so with that, I, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion that, um, we go ahead and give you the green light to pursue a, a grant proposal, to come back to the board with a funding request for that data entry. Um, that's my motion.
I'll second that. Um, any other discussion?
I just think that if, um, they do come back for funding requests that we, that were a part of a specific project, whether it's San Sebastian, instead of something just overly broad, like we say, that we want to find out what the water quality is in the Sa- San Sebastian, from the bridge all the way to the river mouth, or whatever.
Sure.
You know, just something that is...
Yeah, it'll need to be relatively narrowly tailored, 'cause, right, for instance, like Moses Creek and Multry Creek are not technically in our district, so, you know. As much help as they need, we can't help them. Um, so that's a motion and a second.
That's the motion as amended.
Sure.
Elise, would you put, you might have put on next thing, too, just regarding the same issue, um, I had some ideas, I wanted to talk about a pump-out boat, um, and I would present those, because right now, the city has only a pump-out boat that services the city marina, the Mooring Field, and if you're at anchor in the city limits, they will service you, but none of the marinas up San Sebastian has a pump-out at the slip. Now, Oasis has one in the galley, so when you're in the slip, when you're gonna be hauled out, you can access it, but not on the dock. Uh, Oyster Creek, um, River's Bend, anyways, if you'll just put that on the next.
Pump-out boats.
Pump-out boat, Sandy Flowers, new business. Good, so that was a motion and a second. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? None? Great, so...
Thank you, Jen.
Please come back and ask us for money.
Sounds good, yeah. And also, if you guys ever have any questions about water quality issues, or anything like that, I'm happy to serve as a resource to answer.
Do you have a card?
I do. I'll leave it with you.
Great, well, thank you very much. Um, that brings us to public comment. No, no one rushing up, uh, to comment? Good, that, uh, is now comments by commissioners. Tom?
Yes, um, what we'll just discuss briefly was, uh, we had a master plan developed, considering what Sandy said about an executive director, and it was requested in that master plan that we have an exec, that we should have a master, uh, executive director, but it all comes down to the money. And so, at that time, what the board did, again, before any here, anybody here was on it, we did appoint a consultant, Ken Crowder. And Ken came to all of our meetings, and, uh, if we had an idea, we could bounce off of him. When the Volano people came and actually approached me about, uh, a pier, I'm not, not pier, but the floating dock, then Vivian Browning of Volano, myself, and Ken met, met out there. His costs were very low, and he was, uh...
He was only a hundred an hour.
Very effective in getting started, so, but he, he resigned from that post, so maybe we should start looking again into finding somebody who could be a consultant. It'd be great to have an executive director, but I don't think we could afford it.
I, I, I agree on, it'd have to be just on a, what do they call, outsourced, not outsourced, but a ten ninety-nine employee that's really working as a consultant when we have a project for him to work on, otherwise, there is no payment.
Yeah, yes, yeah.
So, it's there when they need, and if we'd like to put that on the next thing, I've got a couple people, I'm sure, that would come in already.
So, why don't we start, uh, that process of perhaps at least having an idea that we're gonna start working toward a consultant? No, no formal motion, just an agreement that we could start the process.
Could I send everybody that document that I found from Ken explaining, which is several pages of what, what an executive director could do, et cetera, and just give that to everybody?
Yeah, if I can find a copy of that master plan. Elise, you know what I'm talking about? It was done in the nineties.
It was done in the nineties.
Nineties, yes.
Yeah.
Do we still have a copy of that still somewhere?
It was in the, um, I saw it.
Must be in the records, yeah.
I'll go get it, and, and that way, everybody, it was very, very informative.
Yeah.
And I thought it could be super helpful.
Well, that just suggests that we start working toward that, and if people want to, you have ideas of who it could be, I have ideas of who it could be, whatever, and then we'll start the process of, uh...
Could we put that on next meeting?
Where do you want to put?
Put, um, I'll, uh, I'd sponsor a couple people coming in to talk to us about that.
Discuss, poor consultant.
What the executive director could do for us, yeah.
Right.
One other thing before I go...
Qualification, what are we looking for?
Is, uh, the invocation. Uh, I thank you very much, Jane, for doing it today. It was very appropriate, I really appreciate it. And I didn't mean to overstep your bounds when I was talking to Jase, Linda's son, but, um, if anybody ever, when it comes to them, if they don't want to do it, just let me know in advance, and I'll always be glad to do it. And, um, we need to choose somebody to represent the board at the...
Regatta of Lights, right. We need a judge. Um, I would nominate Jane. Sandy, you've declined in the past because it's too late, right?
What day is it this year? It's so dark.
Right, it's on a Saturday.
Sorry.
I won't be here.
Right.
It's so dark.
Yeah, it's a Saturday night.
Twenty-first or something like that.
I've got the calendar here.
Yeah, we can send it.
Yeah, with the kids, anyway.
I, they would probably love to go back to the yacht club, they've always felt so welcome there.
They got a big party, I hear.
It is a big party, yeah. Um, yeah, I've done it before, it's a lot of fun. I don't need to do it again, though, Jane. Uh, I will nominate you, uh, to do that.
Okay, I just need to know the date.
All right, that's a second.
I second Jane.
All in favor? All right, all in favor?
You know, the date.
Going back to that.
There's one more thing.
Oh, my God, people!
Everybody here, all of us are invited to the reception afterwards. That's the really nice thing.
At the, at the...
Because they have a lot of food, get a good, nice meal, and we're all invited to go to the yacht club after the Regatta of Lights. Don't park in the parking building that night, because you'll never get out.
Right.
Okay, in all seriousness, what is the date?
Um, I'm trying to find it.
Boy, oh, boy. Yeah, good question.
December?
December eleventh.
Thank you.
Nice.
It is.
Okay. Um, are you done with your comments?
Yes.
I had a comment.
Well, can we get on the line, surprise?
Oh, sorry.
Anything? I just wanted to quickly say, um, on the, the, um, the idea that Carl Blow presented at our last meeting for a dock under the, uh, three-twelve bridge, uh, on the east side, I spoke with Commissioner Waldron, who was very enthusiastic about it. He put me in touch with Joy Andrews, the Assistant County Administrator, and, and we are meant to talk, uh, two, the two of us with, uh, she wanted to talk to Nancy Sykes-Cline on the city commission because there will potentially be some Fish Island impact there, so, uh, just the ball is rolling on that, but...
Well, you said dock, you, did you...
Sorry, I meant bohramp, yeah, not dock, sorry.
Sounds like the north side?
On the east, east side, under the bridge, uh, under the three-twelve bridge.
By the apartment.
Yeah, by those apartments there, yeah. Yeah, it's DOT property, and it's all infill, uh, just backs right up to the water, so there wouldn't be any real dredging or no wetland impact or anything.
That's exciting.
Maybe, I mean, we'll see. It's the pace of government, so look out, you know, twenty thirty-five for that, uh, bohramp.
Will be dead.
Um, Jane?
The, I mentioned this last time, the website, it, I...
Yes.
It needs a major overhaul. I don't know how we go about this, but it's missing bios, it's dated.
Well, the people that I've asked for bios, I put your bio in the same day you sent it.
Okay.
Sent. Um, Tom has not sent me a bio. It's been, I've been waiting for that. So, the bios are, has nothing to do with the website, it's the person sending it.
Okay, but it also, you know, no pun intended, but it could be more navigable.
It's awful.
Well, do, do you want me to put you in touch with the, with the Rees from...
Is it Avid? They're neighbors. I'll talk to them.
Who about this? Do you remember we were talking about the college doing a apprenticeship for us? I did finally get in touch with somebody over there that said, the, at the Career Development Center, that they could redesign the website, do all kinds of, the records, digitizing, every, all of that stuff we talked about, but that we simply have to fill out some kind of form first with Career Development Center, and they accept us as a legitimate employer, and then you're good to go to post amongst, for the apprenticeship programs in the college.
Maybe put it on the agenda for next month.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have a discussion on the, on the website.
I'll bring the forms in, um...
Thank you. That'd be great.
Okay.
And Sandy, do you have any comments?
Only comment I have is I have several people have asked me this month, would we please reconsider the time that we meet, and they'd rather meet about five o'clock at the city, um, hall, and just y'all be thinking about, that's not the first time, that it would be more convenient for a lot of people, and it could be televised. Just asking them on.
Uh, next meeting is Tuesday, December twenty-first. Uh, there being no other business. This meeting is adjourned.